All right, it is 5:30 on September 21st and we are going to be going into executive session first on the following items. Item 2A, I guess I'll back up. It's 5:30, we have a full dius and I'm calling the meeting to order for executive session. Item 2A, "City Council Shall Convene Into Closed Executive Session Pursuant to Texas Government Codes 551.071 and 551.072 to Seek the Advice of Legal Counsel and to Deliberate Upon the Acquisition of Real Property Interests Associated with the Construction of Wastewater Treatment Plant Number Three at 385 State Highway 304, Unit B, Bastrop, Texas 78602, and its Collection Systems, Including All Related Agreements, Authorizations, Easements, Resolutions, and Associated Legal Actions." We will also be talking about item 2B. City Council Shall Convene Into Closed Executive Session Pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.076 to Deliberate Regarding Security Devices or Security Audits in Consultation with the Chief of Police. It is 5:31 and we are in executive session. All right, are we good to go, Colin? All right, it is 6:10, we are back out of executive session. We're on item number three. Take any necessary or appropriate action on matters posted for consideration in closed executive session. We have no items, or in action items, as a result of executive session. It is 6:10 and we will be in recess until 6:30 when we will call to order our regular meeting. We are in recess. Thank you. I am calling this meeting to order. One of my favorite nights when the Navy Junior ROTC comes and does the pledges for us. I want to tell you a little bit about them before they take care of our pledges. With us this evening, we have Cadet Lieutenant Commander Priscilla Segura. And Priscilla is going to either go to A&amp;M at Corpus Christi or join the Army. And the beauty about being a young person is you have choices and you have some time to decide. And you will see on the agenda that Cadet Lieutenant Amber Glass is listed, but she is ill and not able to be with us this evening. But we do have Cadet Lieutenant Junior Grade Alan Janes, who has joined the Army and will be going to the Army when he graduates. Boot camp right after graduation. Have a lot of fun at graduation. And then we also have Mariah, Senior Chief Petty Officer Mariah Greenlaw. And Mariah will be joining the Navy when she graduates. So with that, these young people will be saying both the pledge to the United States flag, the pledge to the Texas flag, and they will also be saying the cadet pledge. If everyone will please rise, I will turn things over to our cadets. And before I do that, I must state how lucky the city of Bastrop is, Bastrop Independent School District, and particularly the kids that are in the ROTC, the Navy Junior ROTC program, to have the opportunity to work with Captain Fletcher and Chief Canales. So cadets, it's all yours.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Cadet pledge. Ma'am, this cadet's cadet pledge is, I am a Navy Junior ROTC cadet, always conduct myself in a manner to bring credit to my family, school, and corps of cadets. I am the future of the United States of America. I am loyal and patriotic. I do not lie, cheat, or steal, and tolerate those who do. I will always be accountable for my actions and deeds, always practice good citizenship. I work hard to improve my mind and strengthen my body. I will seek the mantle of leadership and stand prepared to uphold the Constitution of the United States. Hoorah!
Thank you, Captain Fletcher. Just really appreciate you guys taking the time. If you will please remain standing, we have Police Chaplain Hardy Overton with us, and we are blessed that he is going to give our invocation tonight. Mr. Overton?
Father, we come before you this evening in your son's name, Jesus Christ. Father, we just want to thank you. We give you all the honor and all the glory. Lord, we want to ask you to invite your Holy Spirit to come and take control of this meeting, O mighty Father. Guide us in the decision makings that we need to make for Bastrop, for the county, for the... I just want to ask you, Father, to watch over our state, to watch over America, O mighty God, that we need you. Without you, we can't do anything, O mighty God. And I just want to thank you and give you all the honor and all the glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you so much, Chaplain Overton. All right, council and Colin, I'm going to mix things up a little bit. We've got some special folks with us tonight and we're going to go ahead and do the proclamations first. The first proclamation that I have, council, I'm on item 7D, a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas recognizing October 5th as National Night Out. Lydia Bastrop. There he is. All right. Whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live. And whereas National Night Out enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community, whereas millions of neighbors take part in National Night Out across thousands of communities from all 50 states, whereas the city of Bastrop plays a vital role in assisting the Bastrop Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence provision efforts in the city of Bastrop by supporting National Night Out. Whereas National Night Out provides a great opportunity to bring police and neighbors together under positive circumstances, now therefore I, Connie B. Schrader, do hereby proclaim the evening of October 6th as National Night Out. Thank you, Chief. Are you going to share with us a little bit about the National Night Out?
Yes, thank you so much. So on that Tuesday, October 5th, at right about 5:00 PM, we are going to have the start of, it's more of a parade, so if you were part of that last year, or if you were a citizen and you got to see that, it's going to be much the same. We've got a little bit of route variations, but we're going to post those on the city's Facebook, of course, the Bastrop Police Department's Facebook in the next coming days. So we're going to be downtown, once again, about 5:30 to about 6:30. We'll be going through Riverside Grove, starting at 6:30 to about 7:00. Then Hunter's Crossing started at 7:00 to about 7:30. And then Pecan Park, 7:30 to about 8:00. And then we're finally going to get into Tahitian area at right about 8:00. So of course, we'll be, the Bastrop Police Department, we'll have the Bastrop Fire Department, along with our EMS and first responders. We hope that people come and cheer us on. We have a lot of goodies that we're going to hand out along the parade route. We encourage you to meet your neighbors and just have a good time and meet your neighbors and meet us too.
Excellent. It really is a fun time. And last year, there was a little girl that was jumping up and down when she saw the fire truck. I mean, it's just, it's so wonderful to see that kind of energy. So Chief, Colin's going to take a picture of you and I.
Thank you very much.
All right, our next agenda item is... We are on item 7E, a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas recognizing the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, which is why I'm in purple. This is as close to purple as I could find. And I know that council will be in purple all through October, so we'll take care of that. With that, I would like to turn things over to Bernie Jackson with the Family Crisis Center.
To the mayor and to council and to the city manager, I come before you tonight again to thank you all for the partnership that we have with the city of Bastrop and make you aware of two things. Bastrop is going to go big this year. We're going to go purple, really, really big. We've been working with Rebecca, we've been working with Curtis, and Rebecca introduced us to the Main Street event. And we're going to turn on the purple lights in Bastrop on October 1, Friday night, October 1, and there are going to be lights going on all over town. And we're going to increase that with businesses as they continue to participate. But it's going to be gold purple, really big in Bastrop. And I wanted to thank them for their professional help in the way they've been helping us put this together. We're going to have activities all month long, but I wanted to highlight one of those, and it's going to be the Women's Leadership Luncheon on October 28th at the Convention Center, where our own Assistant Police Chief will be one of our honored speakers. And we said Women's Leadership Lunch, but this is open to all of you. We would like to see all of you come and get the awareness information that we're going to share, and also to hear the speakers. I think Jennifer has some information out there with regard to our other speakers. So we're going to ask you all to participate. And Mayor Protem is going to have to get that shirt out of lavender lilac, and he's going to have to get a purple shirt, or we're going to have to find him one. So to stay with the program, I want to thank you for that. But while we're doing that on Friday night, and we're doing awareness, and we're doing educating, and we're sharing downtown with the people that are down there for the first Friday, on any Friday night across the country, some other things are happening in the homes. And tonight, we wanted to give you guys a visual of the things that are happening as domestic violence is still happening in our country, one in three women. We wanted to show you some of the participants that helped the Family Crisis Center and other agencies help victims who are experiencing domestic violence in their life. So we have our cast here.
Good evening. I would be the victim. So you know, the violence started soon after we got married. He always apologized after and said it would never happen again. I kept hoping things would change, but that night was different. There was something in his eyes that I'd never seen before. He'd never threatened to kill me before. But he took a knife out of the drawer and he placed it on the counter while he was yelling at me. He then hit me so hard, I was dizzy and I couldn't get up. When he left for work, I knew that that was my only chance to get away before it was too late.
I heard my dad hurting my mom before I hid in my closet until it was over. My mom always came to get me when it was safe. That night, it sounded like she had passed out because the screaming suddenly stopped. After I heard my dad leave for work, I went to check on her because she never came to get me. I saw a lot of blood and started crying. I asked her if we could go away and never come back. She asked for her phone and had me dial 911 and hold the phone up to her ear because she couldn't move her arm.
She called shortly after 10:00 AM and sounded like she was in a daze. At first, I couldn't make out what she was saying. All I could hear was she say that he was gone for the morning and she was needing to get help. I was able to retrieve her address and send an officer out to help her.
She was in bad shape, so I had to call for an ambulance. She couldn't see out of her eye. From being hit so hard, I could tell that her arm was broken. She said it has happened many times before, but this night was worst ever. I requested emergency order, protective order, and gave her the information at a Family Crisis Center while waiting for the paramedics. She gave me his work address and contact information, and we will soon be issuing a warrant for his arrest as soon as we can procure one.
She had been to our center before, so he had already had her information in the system. But at that time, she wasn't ready to leave. We had suggested that she have a safety plan for future reference and made sure that she was aware that she could contact us at any time. After this most recent incident, she decided it was time to come into shelter with her child. She felt that if she went home, he was going to kill her. Once I was able to get her to the shelter, we completed a plan to keep her and her child safe while staying with us, and she decided to file for a two-year protective order.
Though this was a fictional narrative, this is an everyday reality for so many. There were 212,885 victims of family violence in 2018 in the state of Texas alone. Assaults accounted for 96% of all family violence incidents in 2018. 174 women were killed by a male intimate partner across 64 counties in Texas, compared to 136 women killed by a male intimate partner in 2017. October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and the Family Crisis Center is painting the town purple in support of survivors. We are asking everyone to stand with us. Together, we can partner in hopes that one day, our community will be free of violence.
Each year in October, advocates across the country come together to bring awareness to the communities that we work in, so that we can partner to bring the awareness, the education, and to help people to be able to identify what's going on in our communities and make sure that victims know that there are resources. We thank you for everything that the city of Bastrop always helps us do in providing services that we have for our clients. We are always striving to make the victim a survivor, and you all help us do that. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present to you tonight. And we want to especially thank our police chief. He said yes right away when we asked him if he would participate with us. So I give it back to you, Mayor.
Let's give them a round of applause. The Family Crisis Center provides such a wonderful service to the community. And we, this skit pointed out, you know, one of the things that I keyed on right away was having a safety plan, because sometimes, the first time it happens, people aren't ready to do something about it. So you guys are giving them the tools that when they are ready to do something, they know what to do. And that takes a special talent and a special group of people to provide that service. So they've already mentioned several of the statistics that are in the proclamation, but a couple of the other ones I wanted to bring to your attention is that 50% of batterers that abuse their intimate partners also abuse their children. And that involves Children's Advocacy Center and our CASA organization, and it's generally not an isolated incident, and there's usually not isolated victims. So it's nice that we have to, that we can provide services, and it's not nice that those services are needed. Approximately 5 million children are exposed to domestic violence every year. That's a heartbreaking statistic. And when you're around it, you begin to think that it's normal. And that's why the awareness and the prevention becomes so very, very important. So it is truly my honor to declare that the month of October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Let's have a round of applause for these great group of people. We can do me and you, or we can do everybody. Thank you, guys. I know it's a school night and folks are busy, so I really appreciate you all doing that. Thank you. All right, council, we're going back to item 7A. Colin, to the mayor's report. Council, one of the things I wanted to share with you before we get started was at our last council meeting, which was a short week ago, we talked about the household hazardous waste was going to be on Saturday. They had 100 vouchers, they had 99 vouchers turned in. So that's really a good thing. And I know a couple of people got a giggle out of my Bastrop beige. They collected 450 gallons of paint. So there is a more than enough Bastrop beige if anybody's needing to pick up any paint. All right, Colin, if you'll go to the second, there we go. The events in just between September 7th and the 15th, on the 9th was the Employee Appreciation Luncheon. I had mentioned at our last council meeting that Mayor Protem Nelson, Councilmember Crouch, and Councilmember Jackson and myself attended, but this is a picture of our wonderful employees. One of my panorama pictures, I don't do those very often. I think it's really important that folks realize that when you say the city of Bastrop, this is who you're talking about. It's the people that do the day-in and day-out work and take care of everything. They take care of everything from parks to making sure our books are balanced, the firemen, the policemen. And they are a great group of people. There's a wonderful camaraderie between them. I was sitting at a table with a fireman. Charlie Elliott got up to get his service award, and the fireman said, "His dad was my science teacher." Like, there's just a true connection, and that's something that you get in a small town that you don't get anywhere else. So I'm just, want to send out my appreciation, and I'm sure on behalf of City Council, the appreciation to all of our City of Bastrop employees. It was a really wonderful luncheon. And then below that, you will see Patriots Day, which was September 10th. And you will notice, if you, it might be a little bit hard, but there's Captain Fletcher in his dress whites. And some of the folks that you just saw do the pledges and the cadet pledge participated in that event. It was wonderful. The police department was out, the fire department was out. It's been a long time, but there's been a lot of people affected by it. And one of the things that Captain Fletcher and I talked about is the kids that you see in that picture do not remember a world before 911. They have no memory of meeting somebody when they got off a plane. They don't remember, you know, they always think you have to get half undressed before you can go through security to get on a plane. I mean, they just, there's a lot of things in their lives that are different that we think about that they have, they have nothing to compare it to. So really a special day and wanted to thank the folks that participated in that. And then the other thing that I did was also on September 9th, I went to the Live After Five function that the Chamber had. I'm there with Mr. Ladd, who owns Craig's. And you know, when you go to the jewelry store, you got to buy some jewelry. So I'm sporting a new bracelet that he made, that he handmade at Craig's Jewelry. So I explained to my husband that he was done with our anniversary gift, so he was pretty happy about that. Okay, if we go to the next page, you'll see the events that I planned on doing from the 16th to tonight. And I did go to the Seamit Solutions ribbon cutting. I'll have a picture for that later. We postponed the board and commission orientation, that's going to be next week. And the First Centennial Mortgage and Austin Title were the sponsors for the Chili Cook-Off, and it was awesome. It was kind of a hot afternoon, but it was some really, really good chili. So I think that's going to be an annual event, and that was a lot of fun. And then if you go to the next slide, the Bastrop Music Festival is around the corner. Starts on Thursday, goes through Sunday. There's a lot of new venues. It's going to be a really good time. Would encourage everyone to participate in that. Next week, the 28th, is National Voters Registration Day. I'll be attending the ARSET Annual Conference. And you see some of the other items on there, and I want to call out the TML Annual Conference. All of council's plans on attending that. And October 5th, you've already heard about National Night Out. And also remind everyone that on October 9th, in the evening, you can go to Fisherman's Park and see Hocus Pocus, which is a really fun movie that a lot of us remember watching when we were younger, and some of us are seeing for the first time, and it's a good movie. With that, I'm done with item 7A. Moving on to item 7B. Councilmember Crouch, do you have anything for us this evening?
We have a bicycling group in Bastrop, and I know that probably everybody in here knows that we have one. We had a ride Saturday just to help to promote bicycling advocacy in Bastrop. And unfortunately, one of the, one of our main riders that puts everything together, his forks broke while we were riding, and his, he had a crash, went over the front and broke 10 ribs and dislocated his shoulder. So that ride was a little longer than we wanted, but we're still getting groups together and riding before we can get safe biking in Bastrop.
You didn't cause that accident, did you, Mr. Crouch?
No.
Okay, that's good. We want to make sure that goes on record.
It was an old part, I think, that did that. But still, it was a kind of a gruesome thing. And then I'm still kind of doing stuff with the parks and trying to locate some land for the parks. And let's see. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. Councilmember Jackson?
Well, you've already mentioned the Bastrop Music Festival is this week, but I'm just going to do a special shout out that on Sunday, the 26th, the very last day, Lynda Green and the Soul Teens are performing at the Kerr Community Center. And Amelie's Down Home Cooking is going to be catering that. So if, from 1:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon, if you have time, if you're not too tired from going to all the other events, drop by the Kerr Community Center. It's also a fundraiser for the center, so we'd like to see you there. And her food is going to be great, and of course, Lynda's singing will be exquisite. So hope that you can come by. It's free, except for the food.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Peterson, do you have anything for us this evening?
Thanks, Bev, but nothing tonight. Thanks.
Councilmember Rogers?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
We'll make it three in a row.
All right, we are done with council member reports. Moving on to item 7C, Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor. You all received an email before the council meeting started this evening with a request from Ann Franklin for you to list some information about you and your background. That is for a grant that we are submitting that's due on Friday. And council, we talked a little bit about how we were hoping to fund the Parks and Recreation Master Plan update. That's an important part of our work plan for next year. And we've been in conversation with the St. David's Foundation, asking them to consider funding that project. Just a few days ago, they gave us the link for the application itself. It's pretty detailed and involved. Thank you, Rebecca, for taking the lead on that, and there are other city employees. Tracy Waldron is in the room, she's helping with that as well. It's due Friday, and so it's kind of a push at City Hall to get all of that, get all that submitted, but we feel good about our prospects. So thank you, council, for that. On the screen, you see something before, in a couple of Mondays, we will have, in conjunction with Bastrop County, held at the Convention Center, a presentation on the new FEMA-provided flood maps. We'll be providing information about what all that means, the 90-day appeal process that starts, that started at the 1st of, no, I'm sorry, it starts the 1st of October, that runs through the end of the calendar year. We are busy getting information out about that now, and we'll... that now, and we'll continue to do that using also our EverBridge notification system. For a while now, we've been working really hard to get good information out to the affected community about the city's building codes and our development processes and requirements. We've had a couple of meetings with the contractors community. That notion has morphed into something we were calling Building Bastrop University. Last Wednesday, we had about 50 realtors from the area in the room, hearing a presentation from Trey Jobe, Allison Land, Vivian Andres from the Planning Department went over how mygov works. Rebecca Gleason talked about the different ways realtors can invite new residents into Bastrop to be engaged, active parts of the community. Got a lot of positive feedback from that. Really appreciate Kerry Fossler, local realtor, very positively engaged. We had a meeting with Kerry where she helped us nail down the agenda for that day. This is the kind of thing, from her perspective, realtors, both who work on the residential side and the commercial side, would want to hear from the city of Bastrop. So we followed her lead and really do appreciate her. So you see on the screen what our plan is for the next few months. We're going to tailor and target the message to be more specific interest to precise audiences. So next month, we'll talk about electrical trades. Then we'll focus on engineers and surveyors. And in December, we'll do plumbing trades. And after that, we'll revisit. But the idea is that we make this a monthly routine for the foreseeable future.
Thank you for doing that.
You bet. Thank you. Last Friday, I attended the first in-person meeting of the Regional City Managers Group. Prior meetings were virtual. But this meeting, we were in Georgetown. And I thought I'd share some of the discussion points during that meeting. I think council will find that interesting, given our recent discussions about hotel-motel revenues and what we hope is happening in the future. And so the subject, the panel discussion, was all about tourism in Texas and what's going on with that and what other communities are experiencing. So you see on the slide who the panelists were. And I just real brief summary, those four bullet points on some of the ideas and pieces of information that were shared that day. And you've heard a lot of these same themes from Susan Smith at Visit Bastrop in her recent presentations. Road trips are and will continue to be popular. So focusing on what attracts people to drive to a destination is a good idea. The leisure travel is really, really strong and has been for the last few months. You, again, referencing Susan Smith at Visit Bastrop at the joint meeting that was held a few weeks ago, and mentioned that things seem to be turning around. And Tracy Waldron, at the last monthly report, mentioned that the July hotel-motel numbers were starting to show a rebound. So, yeah, leisure, and that is based here in Bastrop, too, we think, on leisure travel. The not-so-great news is what's happening with the business meetings market. And most folks seem to be saying that we're a while from that rebounding to 2019 levels. But overall, revenues, sales tax revenues and hotel-motel revenues, the experience statewide and in the communities that were represented on the panel, they are seeing a rebound, again, back to pre-pandemic levels. And what was the most discussed point at this discussion last Friday was that last point about remembering to take care of the locals, your residents. And we've heard this before, and it is true, and I think experience confirms it. What visitors want to do, especially nowadays, is know what the locals are doing. And so it's, we are remiss if we forget about that. We talked a little bit about the dangers of becoming too tied to the tourism industry. Now, I won't name any specific names of towns, but there are communities in Texas who are known for their tourism. And while they're relishing the sales tax and hotel-motel tax dollars, it's becoming uncomfortable for the residents, right? And there's so many visitors on the weekends especially, that it's hard to live there. And so we want to make sure we take a balanced approach to that, which I think we are. The mayor mentioned on Monday is the rescheduling of the board and commission orientation. It will be here at 5:30. And your next meeting is on October 12th. And subject to how you vote on first reading on the water and wastewater rate ordinance tonight, we'll have second reading on that agenda. The, we went through a process of budgeting specific amounts for the community assets. We'll ask you to consider those agreements on October 12th. We have been working with the Main Street Advisory Board, and we also presented this concept to the Cultural Arts Commission of working with the Deep in the Heart Art Foundry here in Bastrop on an art immersion contract where we would be allowing Deep in the Heart Foundry to place pieces of their work on Main Street and Chestnut Street in the city right-of-way. So we've been working with the City Attorney's Office on an appropriate agreement to allow that to happen. And we'll be presenting that with positive recommendations from both the Cultural Arts Commission and the Main Street Advisory Board on October the 12th. And council, at the last council meeting during the city manager report, I mentioned that we were looking to schedule a special meeting with you for you to develop specifically worded economic development objectives. In our recent conversations with the EDC, and the city attorney has been involved in these discussions as well, thankfully. We, one of the conclusions we've reached is that we can do a better job, and we can help the city council do a better job of clearly articulating to the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation what your economic development objectives are. And so the mayor and I have been meeting for the last few days to think through good ways to do that. And we will be ready on October the 12th to present those concepts to you. And is that, all that involves, expect phone calls from me over the next couple of weeks where we talk about that a bit more. So look forward to that. And I didn't mention, we'll also have the agreement with the Destination Management Organization. That's on your agenda tonight. We're going to ask you to pull it off the agenda. We're not quite ready for you to take action on that tonight. Apologize for any inconvenience that represents. And then on November the 9th is time for our next quarterly report, the final quarterly report for fiscal '21. Thank you, council.
Council, any questions for the city manager?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Mr. City Manager, would you take unsolicited comments relative to economic development?
Unsolicited? Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
The citizens said they wanted to hear from you, so you absolutely share any information that you have. Councilmember Rogers, I think it may be important during the, since he's got the slide up here about the quarterly report, we had talked about we're folding in more organizations into that quarterly report. And I believe you had a request specifically for the DMO. Do you want to make that statement?
I just wanted to remind, I was going to mention it during, on the agenda, that even though we're putting Susan's or the Visit Bastrop's report in there, I'd like for her to still be present in case we have questions.
Yes.
You know, in case I bring up something that's crazy, and she can answer it for me. Thank you.
Great. Excellent. Okay, thank you, Mr. City Manager. We have done 7D and E. We have nothing for work sessions or briefing or staff and board reports. That brings us to citizen comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for citizen comments?
No, mayor.
All right, we're done with citizen comments. We are moving on to the consent agenda, council. As the city manager told you, 11C is being pulled from the consent agenda. So we are not considering 11C. Does anyone want to pull A, B, D, or E? Madam Secretary, if you would please read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 11A, consider action to approve City Council minutes from the September 14, 2021, regular meeting. Item 11B, consider action to approve second reading of resolution number R-2021-84 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing the expenditure of Bastrop Economic Development Corporation funds in the amount of $94,300 to enter into a professional services agreement with Corex for a water-wastewater study in Bastrop's extraterritorial jurisdiction, ETJ, and providing an effective date. Item 11D, consider action to approve resolution number R-2021-90 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a public improvement plan agreement with 71 Retail Partners LP for Bastrop Grove, Section 3, Lot 7, as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 11E, consider action to approve resolution number R-2021-91 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a public improvement plan agreement, Lennar Homes of Texas Land and Construction LTD for Bastrop Grove, Section 4, Phase 2, as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing effective date. This concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Move for approval.
Oh, that was in stereo. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jackson and a second from Councilmember Peterson, because they were in stereo. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. We are moving on to items for individual consideration. We're going to start with item 12A. I would encourage you to look at page 109 for the exact wording that you might be interested, should you be interested in making a motion. Item 12A, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2021-12 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, adopting a budget for fiscal year 2021-2022, attached as Exhibit A, making certain appropriations and providing that expenditures for said fiscal year be made in accordance with said budget, updating the master fee schedule, providing a distribution severability, repealer and effective date, and proper notice and meeting. Ms. Waldron?
Think I'm on. Okay. This is just the second reading. I have no presentation unless you have any questions for me.
Council, any questions for Ms. Waldron?
Move for approval.
Does it matter on this one? Does he need to read it exactly?
Whatever's on the staff report.
Doesn't look like there's, they, on page 109, it says, "I move that the city council adopt the budget as presented." So, Councilmember Peterson, is that your motion?
Yes.
I have a motion from Councilmember Peterson?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Crouch. Okay. All right. Any further questions, comments about the budget? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. We have a budget. Thank you, council. Very much appreciated. If you will move to page 416, this is one where it must be read word for word. Item 12B is a gift from the state legislators that we have not had to do previously. Item 12B, I'm on the top of page four. Consider action to approve resolution number R-2021-88, ratifying that the adoption of the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget will require raising more revenue from property taxes than in the previous year. Ms. Waldron?
Yes, that's exactly what it is. We just have to make a ratifying vote that we are stating that we will be raising more revenue from this budget.
Council, any questions for Ms. Waldron?
I move that to verify the vote just taken to approve the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget, which will raise more revenue from ad valorem taxes previous fiscal year.
Councilmember Jackson, you said verify, and I think you meant ratify.
Yes, ratify.
A second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Jackson, and I have a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is that okay? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council, for that. We're moving on to item 12C. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance 2021-13 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, adopting the tax role, adopting the tax rate, and levying ad valorem taxes for the fiscal year 2021-2022 to provide revenue for the payment of budgeted municipal expenditures and providing for tax assessment, record severability, and effective date, and proper notice and meeting. Ms. Waldron?
Yes, and so this is the second reading. We went over this last meeting with a public hearing, but it is the same nominal rate at .5794 per 100.
Council, you might be interested in page 419 of the packet.
Madam Mayor, I move that property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.5794 per $100 valuation, which is effectively a 6.2% increase in the tax rate.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Nelson and a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Rogers?
No.
Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you, council. We're moving on to item 12D, the last item for individual consideration tonight. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2021-14 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Fee Schedule Article A 13.02, Water and Wastewater Rates and Charges. Sections A 13.02.002, Wastewater Service Charge, and A 13.02.004, Water Service Charge, as attached in Exhibit A, providing for findings of fact, enactment, repealer, severability, providing for an effective date, codification, proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the October 12th agenda for second reading. Ms. Waldron?
All right. So we have been talking about water and wastewater rates over the last several years. And as we roll out our bond issuances and roll out our major products, we have been using a rate model that we update on a continuous basis. And we have been talking about the base rate on wastewater having to go up incrementally each year. And so this year is our annual $5 increase to the base charge. 100% of the base charge goes to debt service. And so that's how we monitor whether we're covering what we need to cover. Just want to point out that the model right now, we have $5 plugged in for each of the consecutive years through 2024. That could change depending on impact fees. There's a lot of things that could play into that. But right now, that's what's plugged into the model. The only other thing that we're changing in the water is, this was something that was covered in the 2018 rate study, and it was just an equivalent on our base charges that we needed to clean up to be more in line with the standard meter equivalencies. And so we'll be rolling those out based on this chart as well.
Council, any questions for Ms. Waldron? Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
No question. Just, I want to commend staff for the thoughtful and good approach for us to be able to project revenue and expenditures over the next several years. I commend you all for that. I really liked the process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Nelson. That is why we have good bond ratings. That's why we're able to sell our bonds at good rates and ultimately save tax dollars. So very, very well deserved. Thank you, Ms. Waldron, for you and your team and the consultant.
I move to approve.
I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Rogers and a second from Mayor Pro Tem Nelson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, council. We're on item 13. Councilmember Peterson, it is 760. Peterson, it is 716.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilmember Peterson and a second from Councilmember Rogers. It is 717. We are adjourned. Everyone have a safe evening. Thank you very much.